Good morning. It's Tuesday, March 12th, 9:30 a.m. If you would all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could all please keep standing. Like a little moment of silence. We were remiss last week in remembering the passage of Joyce Giles, who was our former county home superintendent, as well as served as our office for older adults director for a number of years. Thank you. Maybe you see it. I'd like to start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we be seat your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us dear Lord wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. All right.
Move to approve the minutes of the March 5th public hearing and the March 5th commissioners meeting.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion or changes? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right. Any public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed. County Engineers Office. Dan Becker, I think you've got something for us.
Yes, sir. Morning. What a day, huh? That's a nice one, sir.
Yeah.
I've got four resolutions for your consideration today. The first is accepting and awarding the bid for the 2024 Payment Markings Project. The next is accepting and awarding the bid for the replacement of Bridge Number 12 on Smith Road in Spencer Township. The third is approving change order number one for the Pawnee Road Bridge Number 14. And the last is the necessity to close the intersection of Smith Road and River Stykes Road for concrete replacement and widening.
Move to approve the four resolutions?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
The River Stykes was decided to be closed during spring break week. Was that by design to help?
Of course. I mean, we need to make it as hard as possible for people to get around.
Well, that's probably better when there's no school in session, so.
No, we didn't get much of a choice on that. That's what we were able to get it.
Okay.
Sorry.
No good time to close up.
No, that road is always busy.
And I was just going to add that I always know what season it is by your list of permits.
Yeah. Busy.
Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Jeremy Sinco, our sanitary engineer.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
One resolution for consideration today, and that's authorizing a sanitary engineer to obtain an easement for the Fenn and Marks Road Water Tower Replacement Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right. Very good. Thanks. Hallie Muren, our Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have one new hire in sanitary, two promotions in dog shelter, nine rate increases, two in maintenance, three in sanitary, one in office for older adults, two in building, and one in finance, and one fund change in the commissioners. Second resolution is approving the wage increases to employees under the jurisdiction of the Medina County Commissioners.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think it's really a good thing that our minimum wage for our departments has gone to $12. I mean, $15.
Fifteen. Yep. I know we've talked about it for the last two years, post-COVID and so forth, and that, obviously, where the market has been. I'm glad we're equitably being able to make those adjustments, so. Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Brett Thomas, our Finance Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have seven resolutions for you guys today. Most of these are pretty quick ones. The first one is increasing appropriations for the 4D line item. We had some housekeeping that needs done with that. Our second resolution is revenue adjustments for various funds. We had a muni grant that got deposited incorrectly. Our third resolution is cash transfers for the 4D reimbursement. We are finally at the point where we can start getting the 4D stuff moving from 2023 after Tyler's holdup on getting any of the courts to be able to process through. So we'll see that come through in a couple resolutions over the next couple months.
Super. Good.
Our fourth resolution is our print shop revenue line item in the amount of $1,013,965. Our fifth resolution is our gasoline rotary fund in the amount of $20,342.09. Our sixth resolution is expenses of county officials. I do have a couple out-of-state travels this time. We have the sheriff going to New Orleans for a narcotics interdiction and terrorist training conference, an interesting combination, as well as Transit is taking a quick trip down to Nashville for the Tri-Spark Ignite Conference. Our seventh and final resolution this week is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,903,378.05. And as always, copies are kept if anybody has any questions.
Move to approve. Was that, that was seven resolutions?
Yes.
Yes.
Move to approve the seven resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you. Greg Brown, County Home Superintendent.
How are you?
I am well, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, starting with census today, we're currently at 44 residents and two adult daycare. As far as the way it's at the home, the first floor is now full. Second floor, we still have availabilities, and as always, total 52 beds. So staffing, the first two months was, even though we have been doing well with staffing, with vacations, an FMLA, and some other things, we were a little stretched. We're now back to normal, and we will be posting, though, for some full-time aid positions here later this week, now that we've got that new rate in place. So, some of the things that have been happening, last month, I had the Wayne County Home that came to visit us. They had some questions. Always like when the non-certifieds, specifically the non-certifieds, come to see us. It's a great time to do the best practices, and they had, she had, definitely had some questions. So we did that. Next month, I have the Richland County Home coming to us as well, and then we're working with Holmes County for us to go down and visit. They have the building that most closely resembles our facility, which will be a really good one for me to see. I know, I believe Amy's been there, but Miranda and I have not been, so.
Even in physical appearance, it looks a lot. Whenever I drive by that, I think it looks, how much it looks like ours.
Right. So I'm very excited to see the inside of their building, for sure. Current projects, so the 1A restroom, which was on for last year, end of year, almost complete. Floor sinks, toilets, all functional. Still working to get partitions, ceiling tiles, and then just painting done in there, but they're being used now. The front main hallway has been finished. We had the wooden squares put on for just a better appearance. We finished that up through the main hallway, and now we're just painting that. There's still some painting projects to be scheduled, as well as flooring in the 1A hallway. It's due. Some of the grants, I told her I would say this. We were approved for a grant that will provide three touchless water dispensers to replace the current ones that were renting. So it was great. Barbara Walton had a grant that she was working on and just happened to think about the home and threw me on there, and we got it. So I told her I'd give her a shout out. It was, that's really great. That'll save money for the county home now. Some of the donations, especially since I'm a two-month rotation in, Valentine's Day was great. Many agencies, lots of cards throughout the home. Kiwanis Club was one of the ones that I remember for sure. And its food is always appreciated at the home. We just had someone donate 46 cases of cheese. That's always great. Really makes the airmark happy, as well as the residents. Cookies, always, always great that people want to donate. We always say, if you go to the Facebook page, we have a wish list there if you're looking. If not, to call our main number, which is the 330-723-9551. It puts you into the phone tree. It gives you any of the ones, either myself or admissions, to call and see what's, what we're looking for, and then to set up a time. It's always great to meet people at the back door, thanking them, and bringing the stuff in. Some of our events that we've had, Access the Arts hosted the Valentine's Day Party for us. There was music that they brought in, and they've also done crafts. The residents, some of the things that they do, and it's on their big schedule, they do, they've been going to the rec center, and they always go bowling, like on Tuesdays. We had a presentation on the Beatles accompanied by a craft. It's still up. I always like seeing their crafts. The Clutters came through for their Super Bowl party. High energy, lots of fun. I was there for that one. That was, that was a good time. Another thing that we're very appreciative of is the book mobile that comes in every Thursday that really helped with the residents. We did have a library that we had books in, but just not keeping them current this way. Whatever they want, they can get through the library system. And then for March, we had the Chatham Fireman's Association Pancake Breakfast. We've done that every, every year, and they've done it for decades before I was there. We had 28 that went this time. It took us three trips to get everybody there. It was, it was, I said it was, it's always a filling time, and it was. That everything's fresh and made locally. Also, we had, just last Friday, the Board of Elections came in. Some of our residents always have the opportunity to vote, and they come in to do that for us. And then something that's new, we've got a Tai Chi class that we're bringing in now. It's with Tai Chi with Danny. I'll give him a shout out. And it's through the OOA. There's a grant, the grant that you mentioned, we're using that now, to pay for that through the OOA. And really wanted to thank Laura for bringing that up for us. And then there's also a book club that's coming. And then I was just, my last note was, as Easter's coming up, and I, we always have resident council every month. The first half of that's called Time with Greg, and I always, I told them to put out, you know, what their wish list was for Easter, and so, yeah. Ham's always there, and we're always appreciative of the Kiwanis Club because they're always donating a ham or three during that time period, and the 4H livestock auction. I still have some of the ham left over from that as well.
Good.
That's all I have.
Super Bowl party.
Super Bowl party.
Did they, did everybody stay up for the overtime? Just asking.
Well, we always, for Super Bowls or New Year's Eve, they always can stay up as long as they want to finish something up. And the Clutters always go to halftime, and then they allow the residents to, you know,
Okay.
do their thing.
It was exciting.
Yeah, yes, it was.
The first half was the part you'd sleep through, though.
Yeah, exactly.
So true.
All right. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Facilities Director, Stephen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have, if you guys would like to follow.
Thank you.
So just a quick update on staffing. We are fully staffed in our departments. Even our cleaning department has, was fully staffed. I'm going to say as of a couple weeks ago, I do believe I've heard grumblings that we might be losing one individual. So however, we aren't, at this point in time, we have not elected to fill any of the temp positions that you guys have approved. Our retainability in those, that department has been fairly good, so we don't see any reason to overstaff with the retainage that we've had so far. So we're managing pretty good there. During, for our cleaning department, we have been redoing all of our cleaning closets throughout the buildings to just present a better place for those folks to keep their stuff and supplies, and hopefully that continues to improve their morale. We have been deep cleaning bathrooms. We have done the engineers' building at 791 West Smith, and currently, I apologize, we are currently at the Human Service Center, not at Jobs and Family Services, so we will be heading that direction soon. For the courthouse, we completed the one-year walkthrough in December on the new building, and we will be doing the renovation one-year walkthrough in August. So exciting, right? We've been out of that for that long. I have done a couple walkthroughs with the architect in 93 Public Square for the city's portion of the building, just getting their, trying to get them to go through. Obviously, there's that hallway that might be looking from the in custody side into that building that we're trying to navigate, how that gets taken care of. From a project standpoint, we have, we've got the door replacement, the automatic openers for the Farm and Soil Administration Building. Those should be arriving here in the next couple weeks. The courthouse, we had, we're installing a unit wall heater next to the employee entrance side. They, we had put in a roll door on the east side of that building, and that roll door is allowing a ton of cold air. On the colder days that we were, had over in January, we weren't getting that space above about 52 degrees. So, and, so the heaters were working, but we could not. So we're going to add a unit heater into that area and actually just blow heat down on that floor, so see if we can't manage some of that. We do have a heat pump that is managed to go bad at the engineer building, again, 791 West Smith. We have plans on getting that replaced. And then we have replaced two water heaters at our juvenile detention center. We actually took out two 100-gallon tanks and put in tankless water heaters. They were half the cost, and they should provide us an energy savings as well. And so far, we actually had to turn them down because it was actually providing too hot of water. So, so far, it's been a pretty good. It might be a way we move forward in the future. They were actually fairly cost efficient, so. From a capital improvement standpoint, I have a meeting this week with the contractor for the sidewalk at 60 Public Square. The administration building brickwork right out front here, that's starting actually today. So the contractor's here onsite currently. We have completed the administration's north staircase. We have met with, Chris and I have met with an architect to discuss the renovations inside this building, the bathrooms, the ceiling lighting, the parking lot, and how do we tie all of those things together and wayfinding sign throughout the building to make this a little bit easier of a navigation for all the consumers coming into the building to get where they need to go. We will be reaching out to a couple contractors for the court annex roof, which you guys had approved. The courthouse clock tower lighting, we had researched that a little bit. The costs are coming in extremely high, so we're going to continue to do some research before we come back and say anything that we're going to do with that. I know that was approved as a, as a capital, but those numbers are about three times as much as what we originally thought. So we have been a bit surprised by those numbers, so we're still researching what we can do with that. The engineer rooftop replacement has been completed. The Farm and Soil Administration's rooftop units have been completed. We are just waiting on some controls. There was a controls issue at that location that it was in the bid, but they didn't provide it. So I think they're trying to work through how they're going to get that building under controls. So we will continue to update on that. The Human Service Center exterior repair project that is finally coming to an end. We do have a few things that we still have yet to do. The railings didn't quite hit the walls as they were supposed to, so we have a gap in one of the walls. You're only allowed four inches. I think we've got four and an eighth on one end. But we've got an 18-inch gap somewhere because they thought the wall, the brick wall, was going to be a little bit closer to the railing, so we have to close up that gap before we can open it. So we're working on those solutions now. Painting, obviously, on the metal door downstairs and some of the columns that were put in to hold the bridge up. That painting should be happening this week with the warmer weather. Office for older adults kitchen is obviously completed as the grand opening was already there for that. We are, I have reached out to a couple contractors on the fire alarm panel replacement at the jail. I'll keep you guys updated on what those costs are looking like. The cooling tower repair at the jail, we have already done the coating ourselves. We did it over the fall and into winter. When we had some warmer days, we were capable of doing that in-house. And I have a technician right now that's looked at that, the media in that, and he thinks that we are good. We just need to clean it up. So we're going to try that before we spend $50,000 on trying to replace all the media in it. So I'll keep you guys updated on that as well. The jail rooftop units, I have had a couple planning meetings for that. They are planning on having two lifts on that here in April. So we are working through the mechanical issues on where the piping needs to be. Obviously, the new rooftops, they're opposite of what they currently are, so they have to rerun the water lines to the new rooftop units. So we'll start working the cooling lines now, and then once we pull the units off, they should be ready to go. And then the heating side, hopefully, is, we don't need it any longer for the year. Excuse me. Jobs and Family Services rooftop unit is in. We are waiting for a curb adapter. So we are, that's still a few weeks out. That curb adapter will allow the new rooftop unit to actually sit down on the roof. That should be happening directly after the jail's rooftop units are replaced. Juvenile Detention Centers rooftop units have all been replaced and completed. And then, obviously, the veterans' construction. The fence went up yesterday. The demo of the inside of the building has already started. The carpet was out when I was there yesterday. Ceiling tile was out. They have all the walls ready for demo. They're marked for demo. And then, of course, the grand, or the groundbreaking is today.
Yep.
So. That's all I've got.
On the clock tower, is that, are there historic restrictions on how we illuminate that? Or is that part of what's contributing to the cost? Or is it just?
I think it's just the cost of the lighting.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, it's been fascinating.
Does it light a certain way, or?
We had a couple groups come out. They, you can light it however you would like, and I promise you, they will charge you money to light it however you would like. I think we had a quote come in at $93,000. And I had, we had originally estimated 25. So we are, we are a little bit off on those numbers. I just need to make sure that we're not lighting it up in 17 different colors and four different stages, and so.
Yeah, it's not the terminal tower.
It is. It's nice. I think they want to make it the terminal tower, so.
Yeah, that's all right.
Thanks, Stephen.
Very good. Thank you, Stephen. All right. All right. We do have a resolution. This resolution designates County Commissioner Aaron Harrison and myself as members of the Medina County Land Reutilization Corporation Board of Directors. Move to approve?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right. And our organizational meeting, I think, would be scheduled for, I think, the next week, if I recall correctly.
Looking forward to getting that started.
Yep. Very good. Excellent. All right. Next, public comment. Anyone here for public comment? Yes, you want, please, want to come forward? If you wouldn't mind? Just your name and address, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
My name's Robin Kelly, and I'm from Valley City. And I wanted to make a comment about the fact that we understand Attorney General Yost has refused to prosecute our treasurer, John Burke, for having broken the law with regard to his sale of a county vehicle, not at auction, but to a private dealership, which was subsequently sold to his son. So I and a number of my colleagues in Valley City are wondering what can be done to take this gentleman to task for breaking the law if the state will not take accountability for that.
Okay. The best answer to that, that we, obviously, two years ago, nearly two years ago, I started the process, was referred to the Ohio Attorney General BCI did an investigation, and we were only last week informed of their conclusions to that investigation and whether they were going to prosecute. And we had been trying to follow up with them. Every couple months, we would call, try to get guidance, and just obviously frustrated it took this long to get this answer. We will be meeting with, I'll just say, we will be meeting with our legal counsel to determine the next steps. And we will be making that public once we make that determination.
Terrific. Thank you so much for the update.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. If not, open up to discussion session. I guess we've got Paul Kacharian with the United Way. Paul, you want to come forward, talk about our Financial Empowerment Center?
Good morning.
Morning.
Do you have, what I'm going to share is in here for you. So I just wanted to give you an update on what's happening with the Financial Empowerment Center through United Way, and first say thank you for your support through the county CDBG funds. I think you'll see that it's a, it's a good investment, and we're seeing a lot of good return on investment in what we're doing. So this data that I'm going to share is for our one-on-one financial coaching that started in January 2023, in January 2023, and these numbers go through January of 2024, so 13 months of service. Our coach has met with 85 individual clients, that's in-person, virtually, and over the phone, and almost half of those clients have met with our coach at least twice. And for us at United Way, that's our metric to say that that person and that household is on the path to financial empowerment, meaning we understand and they understand what their financial goals and needs are. And over the first two sessions, we've provided them with the tools, the resources, the knowledge that if they don't come back to meet with the coach, they should be able to go off and reach their financial goals on their own. We always welcome them to come back. It's good to have that accountability and that handholding. And as you'll see on the next line there, our coach has had a total of 323 sessions. So the majority of those that have at least two probably have at least four or five sessions under their belt that they're meeting with her. Of the clients, we have helped them, total debt reduction of just over $352,000. There is a caveat on that, though. One client was introduced to the student loan forgiveness program, which she applied for and was approved for $250,000 worth of student loan forgiveness, which has completely turned that life around, as you can imagine.
Wow.
Total savings, we've helped our clients increase their savings by just over $100,000 in 13 months. And then again, you know, smaller metric, but we look at who has safe banking accounts, checking and savings. They're not using these cash checking places and getting, taking over the coals and interest rates for that. So 16 of our clients have opened bank accounts. The other program that we offer is VITA, which is our Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program. And since we're in the middle of tax season, these numbers are for our first month. And I do want to say that we only offer our VITA program here in Medina County two days, well, essentially, two days a week. On Mondays, we have in-person appointments, and every other Fridays, we offer drop-off appointments. So they'll drop off their taxes, we'll complete them, they'll come back, sign off, and get them filed. So over our first month, we completed 51 returns that got filed, that total just over $75,000 of federal income tax returns, about $11,500 and state returns. And then the estimated savings coming to us, since we're filing them for free as opposed to going H&R Block or whatnot, is just under $13,000. So for the VITA program in our first month, the return to the community in total is just over $100,000.
And to be clear, the household has to be under $60,000 in terms of yearly income.
Correct. So to get the VITA filed, it's under $64,000 to come in and get it filed. If their household is under $79,000, we can provide them with a free self-file link through Tax Layer.
Oh, okay. Good, excellent.
Happy to answer any questions.
You have your referral partners at the bottom, which consistent with how we know Medina County operates is, you know, people come in through various doors and get routed through the service providers. Is there one in particular that's, that's driving some of these financial services to folks?
I couldn't point to just one. I, I think all of them are doing a good job of referring their clients to us when they need it. You know, I think one of the things that helps, and Commissioner Hambley is familiar with the collective impact meetings that we've been hosting quarterly, so we get all of these agencies together so that we're, we're talking and we're communicating, we're coordinated in services. So it's not just client or agencies referring clients to us for financial empowerment, but our financial coach is also aware of services that other agencies provide. So she's meeting with clients. If they have small kids in the house and there's some needs, she can refer them over to JFS. It's really a cross-functional system. It's, it's working well.
I think through the collaboration over the last number of years, there's like, the philosophy hopefully is no wrong door.
Yeah.
Whereas if they find their way through, you know, Home Recovery, or Community Action, or John Family Services, or even Habitat.
That's right.
They can be referred to other services. And that way, and I know that you've had that collaborative meeting, and just even had one, was it last week or week before last, on transit?
That's right.
So try to continue that collaboration, and that, that speaks well to the role United Way plays here in Medina County.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Chris, do you have anything for discussion?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Matt, anything? Stephen, anything more? Greg? Colleen?
I'm up. Okay, so a couple weeks ago, we had scheduled a meeting for April 2nd to have a public meeting with all the members of the BOR, including the Treasurer's Office and his representative for the BRRR, representative, the commissioners, the auditor, and I, did everybody RSVP? I think everybody had RSVP'd for this meeting. So I was very confused yesterday after, lately, yesterday afternoon, when I got an email from the Auditor's Office that states Mr. Corpeta has requested a meeting March 27th at 4:00 PM in the Board of Revisions Room 306. Attached is the agenda. Please confirm your availability. Now, this agenda was very confusing to me because all of the agenda, with the exception of the approval of the minutes from the January 8th meeting, which normally isn't done till next January at the organizational meeting of the BOR, is the exact topics that the commissioners wanted input on. So the agenda was put together for six days before the public meeting that we had requested, and I'm super confused as why, six days before our meeting, a meeting has been called to in what, in my opinion, almost circumvent what we wanted for the April 2nd meeting. So I guess I'd like an explanation of this, John. I mean, this is the agenda we wanted to discuss on April 2nd, so I guess I don't understand calling of this meeting, absolutely.
Yes, if you please.
And I can only speak a little bit for the Auditor's Office.
Okay.
I can't speak for the Treasurer's Office.
Well, are you saying the Treasurer and the Auditor have already discussed this?
No, what I'm saying is.
Well, you can't speak for the Treasurer.
I cannot speak for the Treasurer. I, I have no knowledge of what, what his feelings on.
Okay.
The, so from the approach of the Auditor's Office, the Auditor is the Secretary of the Board of Revision by code, and in January, they had their meeting, meeting to determine the chairman for this year, which the Auditor was selected as the chairman. So it's to discuss meetings of the Board of Revision. We've already RSVP'd that we're still going to be at the April 2nd meeting and to discuss. My part in the Board of Revision meeting is to help explain some of the technology that's available to help them do their job.
Which we had a lot of questions on.
Correct. But this is specifically to talk to the Board members on what's available, whether they can use it, choose to use it, that'll be up to the Board and their decision.
So you're putting on the record that if I attend this meeting, and it's disappointing because one of the commissioners is on vacation for when you set this 26th meeting, that's why we wanted a very open and public discussion on all of these items, and I wanted the other commissioners to have input. So are you saying if we, I attend this March 27th meeting, and all of these things are discussed, that the Auditor still will attend our April 2nd meeting?
It is on his schedule for him to attend, and my schedule.
No, no, that's not an answer. That's not an answer.
Well, Colleen, I, I cannot answer other than to not, to tell you that the Auditor has expressed to me that he will be at that April meeting.
Okay, so I'm going to decide whether I'm coming to this meeting.
Okay.
But we still would like the commissioner's public meeting.
These are action items on the 27th, why are we meeting on April 2nd?
Right.
If you've already decided the questions, the issues.
Exactly.
We have a concern, and you've already made a decision regarding these, why are we meeting on April 2nd, other than, tell us why you've decided what you've decided?
I don't believe any decisions are being made, because that would be the Board of Revision, which is one commissioner, one representative from the Commissioner, one from the Auditor, and one from their Treasurer, the Treasurer or their designees.
Okay.
So I think, I think there's a.
You don't believe the decisions are going to be made, or decisions are not going to be made at this meeting? That, those are two different statements.
I am not part of the Board, so I have no ability to tell you what the Board is going to do.
Is, is there a reason that meeting has to be on March 27th? I guess is the other question.
I, I was told the 27th. They are having it on the 27th because there are board hearings on the 27th. So the representatives from each office will already be at that meeting.
So if everybody on the Board of Revision is already set for the March 27th meeting, is there any reason the three of us or the, the Board of Commissioners couldn't move the April 2nd meeting, discussion up to March 20th, or March 19th? We've got another Commissioners' meeting between now and then.
Sure, that's a great idea.
Maybe we just, we just have our discussion. I think it's important that we have a discussion before the Board of Revision meets.
Absolutely.
I, I can't weigh in, it sounds like John can't weigh in on whether or not that Board of Revision's meeting is subject to being moved to after the meeting, so let's move our meeting up.
We have records commission at 11 on the 19th. What, do we have anything else after that?
I don't know, if I'm looking at the calendar.
Okay, so can you let us know, I guess we'll send out an invite, availability of the Auditor. We'll set a time, you know, maybe it'll be before, even nine before, we'll have to look at our schedule.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
But we would like.
I'm just doing, being involved in the meetings I'm told to be at.
You do understand the confusion to get an invite to something that this is exactly what we wanted to discuss six days later.
I, I understand the confusion. The only thing that I can say towards that is I think there's a difference between the meetings, and one is an official BOR meeting.
Right.
And one is a discussion with the Commissioners on things that are happening with the BOR.
But would, what would likely inform the way our representative is going to weigh in on those things, too? I mean, that's kind of the insight we want to gather, so.
Like I said, my question is, how often do you end up having a 4 o'clock meeting on a Wednesday?
Well, that's what I'm saying, this is the last.
I will tell, I will tell you why it's 4 o'clock. There are BOR meetings from 10:00 AM until 3:00 PM. The last board meeting probably will go to 3:30. We figured there might be some people that need a break before the 4 o'clock start. That, that is why it was scheduled for 4 o'clock.
This is unusual, because again, normally even the minutes from January are approved at the organizational meeting next year. So this is an unusual agenda.
Was this the, I guess, was this discussed at a BOR meeting, that they would have this special meeting at 4 o'clock?
The, I was not at the original Board of Revisions meeting, so I can't answer that. What I can say is there are issues that were still unresolved after the January meeting.
As I understood, that's why we wanted the special meeting. As I understood, that's why we wanted the special meeting, because they were unresolved, and we needed a better understanding of that. So, okay.
All right.
I mean, I can, I can only answer.
Okay, so we are, we are going to set a Commissioners' meeting that we actually need the Auditor to attend if, if we're going to have this agenda discussed March 27th.
And I think the, just to, just to, just be as clear as possible about it, if we don't have the insight from the other members of the Board of Revision as to why these changes are necessary, we're going to have to come up with our own conclusions about whether they make sense or not.
Right.
And so our decisions, not decisions, but it will be at a public meeting, so our discussion of those things will likely inform our position at that March 27th meeting. So I would, as a personal matter, and I think I, not speaking out of turn here for the other two members of the Commissioners, would prefer to have as much information as possible at that meeting so we can make informed decisions.
It, it, the original April 2nd invite was, you know, moving forward positive, moving forward with information, open communication, so that this was a little blindsiding to have a meeting six days before set on the exact agenda we already had.
I understand your concerns about that. I, I was just told, can you present the technology stuff that are, is available to them, and that's what I'm going to do. And I did that for the Planning Commission, I've done that for Economic Development, and using GIS as a tool moving forward. We own SharePoint, it's a nice tool to use. In fact, I'm using it with the State Auditor's Office right now as a tool just to gather information and allow it to be disseminated more. But I don't think there's anything that's requiring any Board member to use any of that technology.
But I really would appreciate if you would attend this meeting, because we do, we do have huge questions on SharePoint. So I absolutely would appreciate if you.
Oh, yeah, I, I know that I, I have availability on the 19th.
Good.
I can't speak for anyone else, I can speak for myself and my schedule.
And Colleen, you'll coordinate with the offices.
Absolutely.
All right, everybody. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right. Do you have anything else?
I do not.
Aaron?
I have two items. I have a NOACA update. Last week, we had our March board meeting, I heard a sigh. We had a March board meeting with NOACA. At that meeting, the official work plan was approved. We, Medina County voted in support of the, the overall work plan for the year, even though it did include the provisions of the Climate Action Plan that included the, the portions, the specific portions that, that I had voted against at the prior meeting related to, you know, the impact on agriculture, the agricultural community, and, and some efforts to kind of make them subject to these plans, even after they weren't really fully vetted in terms of the way the other, you know, greenhouse gases were vetted. There was no agricultural-specific research or lead-up done that justified the recommendations that were made, which is the essence of the concern. But I felt that I had raised those concerns at the January meeting, and there's still plenty of things in that overall work plan that you don't really want to be seen as standing in the way of, so we did, we did vote to approve it. With, with one caveat, though, too, the involvement of Medina County, and I know this isn't news to anybody in this room, but the benefits to Medina County in the overall work plan are, you know, you just look at that and you go through page after page after page of projects, and we are very much in the background. And so it, I said to the, the room in, in kind of noting that I was going to be voting in support of it, you know, I have a hard time when people in the community ask, or when the two of you ask, you know, what, what the benefits to us are from NOACA, and I think if, if more projects were in the works there and, and part of the, kind of the general operating procedure that the other counties have a lot of benefits from that, that we don't see coming down here, it'd be a lot easier question for me to answer. And so I look forward to the day where that's the case. But I at least wanted to make note about that. And then one other note, because of this Climate Action Plan and the, the problems, specifically the most recent ones with the, with the agriculture language, we are identified right now on the Climate Action Plan website as, there's a long, two-column list of project leadership. And I have to tell you, after participating in a year of discussions as a Board member, I don't feel like Medina County's a leader in that project at all. So I might, with, with your support, put together a letter to suggest that maybe they just remove us from that website as.
Absolutely.
Leadership of the project, because the suggestions and input we've made over the course of the last year has been routinely.
Ignored.
Ignored, yeah. So that's a letter that I'll put together for everybody's review before we send it, but that's just kind of where my head was at after, after that meeting and, and just some of the ongoing frustration there, so. No other NOACA updates. One, actually, two things for a positive note. I've got my blue on today, the Brunswick Boys Basketball Team playing for the, for the regional semifinals tonight, and congrats also to Medina Girls Team who made it to the regional finals last week. So they, you know, both are on pretty good runs, so.
Where's Brunswick playing?
I, I don't know, I know Medina had home games, but Brunswick, I don't think, they don't have the benefit of playing at home, unfortunately. But I'm not exactly sure where they're playing, but they beat St. Ed's to get here, so that's a pretty big accomplishment in itself. So good to see the county high school athletes having ends to, positive ends to successful seasons. We also had a couple area wrestlers that won the state championship, so it's that time of year where there's a lot of, a lot of success out in Medina County as well represented across the state in the state tournaments. So just want to make note of that as well, to offset the negativity from my previous comments.
Anything else?
No. Yeah, I wanted to bring forth, actually, it was a discussion item, and I'd been waiting to post that, and as you were, we had received some requests for the Commissioners, and this has happened since I've been around since 97 with some frequency, about the Commissioners holding on a regular basis and a scheduled basis evening meetings rather than, than here. And I just, Rhonda did me a favor, and we, we ended up polling all the counties, basically, and there's only one county in the entire state that actually does on a regular basis evening meetings, and I think it was Lorraine County that.
Every other.
Every other. And they do, but they do two meetings a week. So that one meeting they have with all the, as everybody knows, that these are business meetings, and you're hearing from department heads and everybody like that, and if you do an evening meeting, that means everybody has to shift to evening, and frankly, technically, evening meetings then, then conflict with some other local government. Historically, it's either a township, or a zoning commission, or a council meeting, or any of the cities and villages, and they all are taking other nights of the week. And traditionally, when the Commissioners have tried doing evening special meetings, even hearings, we get nobody showing up. And so it's kind of hard to justify to do that. But I, I'd asked Rhonda to do that, and I just wanted to put that on the record. We've examined that.
Can I add one thing to that?
Yeah, sure.
When I first decided to run for Commissioner, I had gotten some input from some people in the community that they wanted evening meetings. So when I first got in, I asked the other two Commissioners to have one, and we did, and no one showed up.
Yeah. So if, if there is some issue, as some know, we sometimes do hearings that we can have another special meeting in the evening if it's so fit. I mean, if we get an interesting topic or somebody that, that wants to come in, certainly all three of us are available to talk to any resident that might have a concern, so you don't have to come to a meeting to talk to a Commissioner. And certainly, we, we try as much as we can to communicate with them, and if we need to bring it forward, we can certainly bring it with the rest of us. But by and large, we try, obviously, to have that level of communication, as do local government officials typically. So at this point, I just wanted to put the record, I want to thank Rhonda for doing that, that research for us, and likewise, we'll take that into consideration. We can have some special evening meetings or a hearing, and on certain occasions, we will, but by and large, we have to obviously conduct business and make sure our employees